We did a pretty, really brief overview there during the meeting, right, about all of those different components. I do think that all of those different components could come up for us at different times in some way, shape, or form this year. You know, there was some big things in there around athletic eligibility, charter schools, some of those other components that informed some of the other work or conversations connected to us in the district. So I would also say to the board, you know, at some time if we feel like we do need a refresher and overview of something along those, even though we pass those before we approach a new topic in that area, don't be hesitant to ask for us to pull back out some of this guidance and do that too. Because again, around a facility master plan, you know, the charter school conversation, how does that play in? If we get back to transfers, you know, how does that eligibility component potentially inform that? But really what we wanted to spend the majority of the conversation and a large portion of this work session on was really around that diversity, free speech. The pledge of allegiance one's a little bit more straightforward. You saw our district communication come out around that component, but really more around diversity training and the free speech components and what we've tried to do with staff to date and with administrators. And I think the big aspect or lens I would just put on this is that we'll need to continue to team with our folks, right? That we don't want people feeling like they have to go it alone on this and make a mistake that then is going to get them in trouble in some way. That we want people talking to each other and trying to learn from each other on it. That's what we're trying to do as a team and trying to provide support. But we know that people have some fear as they step into their classrooms about the content that they deliver, or even if they feel more in a safe spot about their content, about just informal conversations that'll come up. That's what we heard from a teacher even at the last meeting, right? What do I do about all the stuff that's outside of the standards? It is just the happenstance of just dealing with kids and people that have questions. How do we handle those? And I think if we can still, if we can try to operate from this foundation of let's be a team, let's talk about it when we have those hypotheticals, or when we have those scenarios, or if we get into one, debriefing about how we handled it, right? And is there a different way to handle it the next time? I think that the thing we want to try to provide our staff with is that they know where the line is and, you know, what the new expectations around this law are. And so we wanted to make sure you were well informed about that tonight too, and that you could ask questions that you might have, and then that we could just have a conversation is really a starting point. Because I think like this one around the health and safety one, it's not just a one and done conversation. It's probably going to require some continual conversation on our behalf. So with that, I'll let Amy and Chase kind of kick it off from an overview perspective. It might be good, of course, you know, we work at your pleasure and you can ask questions whenever you want, but so many of these components are tied together. It might be good to have the overview component first before we get into a lot of back and forth around scenario-based type work.
Thanks, Matt. So what you're seeing this evening is a presentation that we provided to the admin council at our first meeting in August, slightly modified for tonight's purposes. It was posted on board docs. On the left-hand side are actually hot links to a lot of the guidance from the different agencies on this, and they've been available to our administrators prior to the meeting with their staff. The other thing that we had our teams do was Allers &amp; Cooney, a law firm that we often use out of Des Moines, put out a series of videos, one for administrators on these changes in legislation this year, and then also one for staff. And we had our administrators all watch the administrator video and then share the one related to staff with their staff in a staff meeting, so that they saw together an opportunity to debrief as a staff and to ask questions. We've also added it to our annual trainings, and so our staff will all have the opportunity to watch the video again, and they'll actually have to check off that they watched the video a second time this fall. And so that gives you kind of a background of where we are. And as Matt mentioned, these are really the four house files that we're going to kind of quickly go over the high level this evening and hopefully have more of a discussion. We just don't want to present on it. And so free speech, the parameters of racism and sexism training, and educational practices, that's the pledge of allegiance. And Amy's going to talk briefly on the education appropriations of 868.
Yeah, thanks, Chase. So as we were preparing this for the administrators, we didn't specifically add any slides around education appropriations, but essentially we followed the guidance in order. So if you click on, when Chase moves to that next slide, there's actually a hyperlink there, or it's been provided in some of the other docs. So this might look familiar to you. It's the 2021 legislative session equity inclusion and free speech. And again, we did provide information in the slideshow, and that's why I just quickly want to share that when we talk later about student free speech, parameters for racism and sexism, and then pledge of allegiance actually falls up there under education practices. But as far as the education appropriations, a couple of things that that house file did. One, it directed the Department of Ed to do a couple of things around building a component into their website about complaints, and then making sure that they were developing training for equity coordinators. This next piece is important for you all to be aware of, and I'm sure you already read this, but it allows electors of a school district to place an item on the agenda of the next school board meeting if there's concerns about curriculum. If the proposal relates to curriculum, the district may halt the use of that material until this next board meeting, at which the proposal is presented and discussed. But we don't have to, that's just a "may." The other thing that's not stated here, but it's stated in the Allers videos, is that for that to happen, it's either got to be by 50 electors that have signed a petition to do that, or 10% of the last vote that had to do with school officials. Another component then is, based on the development of what the Department of Ed did there on the website about complaints, all of our student handbooks needed to make mention of that this school year. So that mention has been placed in our student handbooks. And then last but not least, again, the board of directors shall provide training on free speech to our equity coordinators as well. And that's, we're doing that here, but of course the Department of Ed is also developing that. So with that, I just entertain questions, or we can start moving through the rest of the presentation.
So I think that's an important piece for Amy really to start with, because one of the things that you'll see if you present or if you review overview is there's a heavy hand of enforcement or accountability coming from the state about these cases. And so that part is in line with what you'll see is what they say, some of the enforcement mechanisms that the DEE is going to be empowered with against school districts administrators if they believe that we violated one of these new house files. And House File 744, free speech in schools. Oh, by the way, we should have said it, but we invited Joe and Crystal. This is obviously our admin take based on the guidance we received from the DEE, but we know there might be some legal questions as well. And so rather than trying to answer those, we wanted them to be here as well, so Joe, Crystal, we get off script, you know, pull us back in a little bit. But House File 744 is about student free speech. And I won't read it to you, but really the take and what we've got from the DEE is it's really about, you know, not infringing on any one viewpoint. That all viewpoints that are expressed need to be protected and need to be allowed under the First Amendment in the schools. There are some exceptions, right? There is some speech that is not protected by the First Amendment, and they, how am I not hearing a bit? But this gives the district requirements the DEE told us about. And that first one, protect the intellectual freedom of students and staff, and establish publicized policies to protect students and staff from discrimination based on speech. And then again, they're just trying to really reiterate that we need to make sure the district are protecting the free speech of all students and staff, and that we make sure that discrimination based on speech is not taking place. As I mentioned when Amy was talking, there's about enforcement and what we as a district need to do in terms of making sure that staff or students aren't disciplined, or if you're a staff member terminated, related to any retaliation or conduct that might otherwise be authorized under House Bill, House File 744. And Amy and Matt kind of mentioned this pretty straightforward, and so it's really just a reiteration by the state to protect free speech in schools. Now, I mentioned it all, but it is nuanced. And so they gave a couple of examples, and I'll give you a second to read these two scenarios that are pretty closely tied together, but how they might be different and how one would be... I'll just look it up here in a second. So we could have a quiz, right, and ask you for the answers, but we gave the answers on the front. And really why I say it's nuanced is the difference between the two scenarios is in the first one, it asks for an answer based on the scientific research, and in the second, it asks for the student's opinion. And a low mark, when the teacher's asking for an answer based on the scientific research, would not run foul of this house file. But the second one, they're saying it could be a violation of House File 744, because even though that opinion might not be one that's, you know, based in scientific fact because of the way that the statement or the assignment was read, if a teacher marked the student down for this, they could find themselves in violation. And so that is really one of the things that we want to make sure that we talk with our administrators and our teachers about, because it's those types of differences that we want to make sure that staff feel comfortable with as we move forward. So what does it mean? The district cannot allow teachers, administrators, or others in the organization to censor, punish, or retaliate against individuals based on the viewpoint or political undertones of their speech. But like I mentioned, we don't have to tolerate all speech, and there is some speech that's outside the protections of the First Amendment. And they did give us some examples of those. And we can see those there. And then if employees fail to abide by the district policy in House File 744, we could be subject to termination and or referral to the DOE. Again, going back to that, lots of language on enforcement and what the consequences could be for districts, not only as a whole, but also as individuals, if we don't enforce the house files. The next one we're going to go to is 802. Before that, questions or comments on this before we move to 802? And again, I know we're going quickly, but we just want to make sure that there's time for discussion, but happy to entertain questions at this point.
Just a real quick question, and just probably just a bit of snark.
Sure.
How much resources have they provided the DOE to investigate all of this micromanaging, heavy-handed, nuanced stuff? With 50 people are going to complain about whatever grade their kid got, and the DOE is going to get involved in like individual teachers grading practices.
Well, was it the Board?
The Board of Educational Standards, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, we get to, we get to make a man.
You, and so then the claim would come before you all.
And to the DOE.
Yeah, I think that's the concern for educators, right, is that they wouldn't have the capacity at the Department of Ed to do that, but the concerns could come directly from parents or community members directly to the Board of Educational Examiners if they feel like they're in violation.
So that's going to go to the board packet, right? Like if somebody has a complaint, that's going to go in, we're going to have Brady's test.
It forces a public hearing, right? Isn't that what?
Well, the public hearing could be on any topic that they would get that required number of signatures. So that was the component you talked about there that then could, it forces it to be put on the agenda. Now, what we decide to do with it on the agenda is still, you know, is the board's discretion. The other part though, just like Charlie kind of asked in the regular meeting, where'd you go, Charlie, about do we still do those formal complaint process that policy approved talks about? Yes, we would still try to handle those complaints through our approved, from our processes inside the district, right, before something would get elevated to you. But if those number of signatures are activated, then it ends up, you know, potentially on that board agenda, and then we have to decide how we handle or respond in that situation. Those are probably going to be more global things, honestly, or it could be an axe-to-grind, you know, type of scenario. But those are, those are kind of the, I guess, the playing field a little bit for the scope of it.
I think the other concern is, will the, you know, is the board going to then expect the teacher to pause? You know, if there's a question on the table about that particular curriculum, because that's, I think, where the teachers are terrified. They're like, which, I mean, do I even go down the road? You know, do I just like, you know, do I even try if, when it's challenged, then I need to stop the curriculum? And I think it is at the board's discretion as to whether or not the expectation is that it's paused while under review.
Right.
So I think those types of questions, people will like answer.
Yeah, and the part around what ends up on the board agenda, petition for a hearing with the board, that's more global than any of the diversity training we're talking about, right? That could be because they don't think the football coach is winning enough games, right? I mean, it's pretty wide open as far as how that's written. I think Laura has a good point around, you know, the nerves right now are around some of the other components of these pieces of legislation around the things they can or can't do that have been spelled out to them in that regard. And then what happens with the curricular concern in that meantime? If we know that there's going to be a hearing, do we decide to push pause? Do we let them go ahead? You know, in all honesty, I think we're going to probably have to give you a recommendation about what we do with that curriculum in the meantime, because you won't have a chance to act. And so I think if we get into one of those scenarios where there's a petition for a hearing with the board, we're going to have to advise in some way about is that something we should really hold on, or do we feel okay proceeding because of the nature or substance of the concern?
Like this, if a parent can still, is there anything that goes directly to the district?
Yeah, they could file a complaint directly there. It doesn't mean it's going to be legitimate, or that it's going to be investigated or anything, but they don't have to work through us to activate that.
And if that happens, then the local school board, this local school board essentially has no, no effect upon, there's nothing we can do about the outcome of that process. Is that right, or not?
Yeah, I mean, well, I don't know. Chase, I don't know if you have some other perspective. I mean, I would think Charlie with some of those, they go right to the DOE. It's not like they totally disregard a local district's investigation, you know, for that, but we may not be aware of it before the BOE is probably, you know, the catchier thing, that if they go right to the BOE, they open an investigation, you know, and conduct their own. We could simultaneously be conducting side-by-side investigations in a sense. I don't know if there's anything from experience you'd want to talk through there.
Can we write a policy that says that a parent goes directly to the DOE, we are committed to conducting our own investigation of what happened?
I would make a lot of...
I'm just not sure we'd be aware.
They're going to want to be terrific complaint or thought of the district, because you may not even know there's a complaint pending before a BOE. They go directly to them. Now, my experience has been they screen out a lot of things because they recognize that the, they do an initial screening in terms of district's involvement. Typically, they will send a request out to the district for information about the individual teacher, kind of doing their investigation, pulling the district into to provide factual information, not as a party tutor or an advocate. That's usually how you find out about it. You get a letter in the mail saying a complaint's been filed, and they ask for things like copies of a personnel file, or whatever other information that may might be relevant. They don't, they're not exactly staff-intensive. They've got, I think, two or three investigators, and they're not going to, they've got bigger things going on than this. There are other complaints that are more substantial. I think what they'll do is they'll probably screen quickly to figure out if there's really anything there, and maybe pursue it. The others may go on a real back burner. They just don't have the resources to do it. They're dealing with more serious things a lot of the time. That doesn't, now, if the, if an administrator becomes aware of it, they could file an internal complaint in the district, or a parent who filed, more likely a parent would file a complaint with the district. They may file both places, BOE and with the district.
I guess we're struggling with trying to figure out what we can do best.
And in terms of, there's not, I don't think you would ever really have a hearing where the teachers, the allegation against a specific teacher was involved unless it was a termination here. And we're going to see how all this plays out, but frankly, I think it's going to have to be fairly egregious to get to the point where you recommend, or the administration would recommend termination. More likely that you take the teacher aside and say, look, here's what happened, you've got to think this through, because, you know, you're only going to get somebody bites the apple if you need to conform your conduct. And that's what I think what Chase is talking about. I think, I see the real key to all this is making your staff well informed about. And some of these lines are pretty fuzzy.
So I have a question on that. You know, there's a, there's a well-developed, there's prudence behind what's protected speech and what's not, right? As it's a little yellow fire in the major, are we going to be able to rely on that? Can we pull that through to this analysis when we're trying to figure out if something's protected and not protected? Or are we in kind of new territory where we can't allow that?
I think, I think a lot of that will still apply. It's a well-developed body of law, but there's a, there's a lot of nuance and murkiness in it too around exactly what is protected and what isn't. Particularly comes, it's these sorts of the unprotected speech. When does something cross the line? When does something materially and substantially disrupt into school operations? That's, that's the Mahoney case which dealt with the cheerleader. And the district said this is disruptive, and although it's Supreme Court, and they said, there's nothing disruptive about this. And so reasonable minds can think differently about what the, what the boundaries are of that well-developed body of law. And you're right, it's been litigated over and over again. And the Tinker case is still out there, and it's sort of the foundation, particularly in school districts, mostly for students, but also if some applies to staff. They specifically mentioned staff and Tinker opinion.
That was essentially the one question I had when I looked up there, and I'm like, okay, who's defining bullying and harassment? Who's defining obscenity for the speech, right?
Well, I think that's part of it, and then the material substantial disruption piece Joe was talking about, and part of it is the new political landscape we're in, that some of these terms aren't as easily clear-cut about where they fall, about what's, what could be considered material and substantial. That was in some of the conversation we got into with the administrators, right, about a student wearing a MAGA shirt into a school building, or into a group of African-American kids. I mean, is that a material, is, can we anticipate a material and substantial disruption? Some of that stuff's not super clear right now, so our ability to know when to step into those situations and when we're going too far then to restrict speech potentially versus when we're actually trying to avoid a negative thing from occurring. So I just give you that reference from, I think there's some new things we're encountering that probably aren't as well-defined for people to have an even operating playing field to work from. Sorry.
Well, that's what I was going to say, I don't, I mean, Joe correcting, but a lot of these concepts aren't, aren't new. I mean, these are things that we've been able to exclude from student speech for a long time. It's a new point. Matt, I think you hit the nail on the head. It's what's the landscape now as opposed to when Tinker came out in 1969? And I think that those are the challenges and what makes it nuanced and things.
So there's another developed body of law around prior restraints, and that's part of the problem with disruption, is you almost have to let it happen before you can stop it, because you can't, there's also a restraint of free speech, which is kind of what some of this is about. You can't, you can't, so you can't say that. Once, once it's out, maybe they said something they shouldn't have, then you can take action. And that's, that's not a new challenge. That's a challenge that's been out there for 50 years.
Yeah, I'm a little, you know, that stuff, I think we'll figure it out, and we're going to have to go through it. But I guess what I'm worried about, so the last thing, that a specific employee, right, so the subject determination order for old the BOE, is that still our discretion? Or is the BOE, can a parent refer a teacher? And so now the BOE is going to come and look at their license because of this test question or something like that?
Well, I mean...
That's the part that feels to me like the huge overreach into our ability to hire and retain staff, is if a parent doesn't like their kid's grade, it's not just complaining to the principal, it's like now your license is threatened as a teacher, potentially?
Again, that's not a change either. Parents have always had the right to refer to that.
Yeah, but about the difference between an opinion and describe the science on climate change, right?
No.
That seems like, yeah, I get it if, if there's an inappropriate relationship going on and the parent knows about it, right? I mean, I read the BOE, what they investigate, they investigate real problems, people who have behavior that's, should be investigated, right? Like things that we can probably objectively say, you know, and then they'll get into the weeds on it, right? And they'll really look at the situation. But I don't know that I've ever seen, I didn't like my grade in social studies.
I think the example we tried to use there, JP, was actually trying to get us away from really probably the race-based nature of where the spirit of this legislation came from. The spirit of legislation, if you think about why it's created, right, it's to create this more conservative political view, you know, climate right now that was trying to protect some speech where they felt like it was getting muzzled out of the conversation. So that's the spirit behind the law. So I think we were trying to pick an example that maybe wasn't as closely tied to that to differentiate that when we were working with staff about, hey, what's another example that maybe is a little bit more clear-cut for you about when you wouldn't step in and grade a kid's opinion, right? But the spirit of why these are coming to us was really in an effort to protect the speech of that end of the spectrum, and that's why, you know, politicians put it forward. Some of those other aspects, I don't think are new. Joe did a nice job of talking about how they funnel out those concerns and how they're really not going, that's not where they're entertaining it. I think it's when I, you know, that specific example I just gave out to you, there a teacher or administrator steps into that type of a situation before something's happened, that's where we're going to be on probably some shakier ground.
And unless they were, this is what Joe was saying, unless they had a changed practice, whenever our district has been involved with something that they will be, the first thing we get from them is, tell us what you've done about this at this level. And so the BOE, in my experience, hasn't been playing, got your grime, do they go or do something, and all of a sudden say, this is what we did. They're normal response, because they funnel out, they only have a couple investigators. Tell us that you are aware of this and what steps have you taken? And we've got no indication that that's going to change.
And that's my biggest worry right there, is that it becomes this super micro, just from a, because I know the intent, right, I know the spirit of why they do it. But boy, they just wrote it broadly. So I guarantee you some stuff's going to come up that they don't like, you know, in some other town here, people would just say, I can wear my Black Lives Matter t-shirt, you can't stop me. And so there's going to be a lot of unintended consequences for the people who pass this legislation. My big worry is do, is protecting our staff, right, from really micromanaging. But if the BOE is going to kind of operate the way they have in the past, I think they give a lot of deference to districts, and I think they really investigate things, and they try to be fair, and they don't have a lot of staff to look into this.
I would just share that there's a four-page document that's called Code of Ethics for Educators, and maybe not everybody around the table knows that. There's eight standards that we're expected to adhere to, and Chase and I actually did a presentation with new teachers around that. So I can imagine, you know, this particular piece here on, around free speech will make a great document as well.
In my experience, the BOE has been, I think Chase is right, they'll say, what did you do about this? And if you've done something, sometimes, oh, just dismiss it completely. And that's not going to be something the board has done, that's going to be something the administration is doing, to say, you need to look at this again, you need to think about this, and here's, here's where you may have crossed the line. So you're going to depend upon people internally to figure some of this out, which is a far better alternative than having it end up in Des Moines.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there are really egregious cases, and I, it's so hard to know what's going to happen, they did the same thing at the university level with the free speech. I mean, it's sort of, it's an across-the-board campaign. And I said earlier, I think the key is really having the staff well-educated. I mean, I think things like this, and I suggested, not just once a year, maybe once the beginning of the year, once in January, go through this stuff so it's fresh in the mind. I recognize the fears teachers have, but I think if, if they understand the difference between fact and opinion, everybody's fair to express opinions. And there's always been concerns about people bringing opinions into the classroom as educators. Kids bring their opinions in. I think it's what the educator says in response to that opinion that's probably my biggest concern. If they challenge a kid on an opinion, that may be something where you get a complaint, instead of just saying, why, why do you think that way? Disagreeing with. And I, it's hard to write rules that are going to be broad enough. And I think some of, some of this is going to, in terms of trying to figure out how to deal with this, some of it's just going to have to be based on experience, what happens when there are complaints. With any luck, there'll be complaints in other districts and not here, and you can learn about it in the carousels.
And I think that's why we have to support the staff and social, you know, companies there, because they are human. And they're, they're, you know, exposed to, you know, what students say. They might be traumatic either way, it'd be dependent on what, you know, how it lands, you know, and that matters too, right? So how are they, you know, how are we helping them self-regulate when they hear something that's triggering and not respond in a way that will give them a bit of trouble? So that's why we're heavily, heavy on the SEO coming up. So that's the plan.
The other thing about BOE is that often, even if they find a complaint is justified, what they do is they say, you take this Ethics for Educators course, and you're done. They don't, pulling a license or suspending a license is almost a last resort. There are times it does happen, but unless it's persistent behavior, I just don't see licenses going to be the anchor of this.
So as we move from 744 to 802 and the parameters for racism and sexism training, I think right at the top, it's important to remember that we are committed to the work that we're doing around our DEI plan, and that Joe's mentioned, the... and that Joe's mentioned the, the education piece and informing our staff about the, about the parameters, and we think we need to do that. But at, at no time do we want anyone to take away that we are backing away from the important work we know we're doing under the DEI plan. We really committed to it. It remains a focus of the work that we're doing as a board, we're doing as an administration, and that we're doing together for the good of everyone in our district. And we wanna start there because we think it's always important to, to keep our focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion at the top of mind. 802 does provide some parameters around what training should look like, and there's a lot of information on there. But really, the second half of this first bullet tells us what this, this, this House file prohibits. That the superintendent must ensure that we do not teach, advocate, encourage, promote, or act upon specific stereotyping and scapegoating on the basis of demographic group membership or identity. That's the overall piece of this House file. There are lots of details embedded in it that Amy's gonna go over here in a couple of minutes. But that is the starting point for this House file. It does also provide that, I mean, it doesn't prevent employees from responding to questions about some specifically defined concepts that Amy's gonna talk about. And it also then, after this, it lays out what we can do in terms of training. So, there is some pieces in there, it's not all you can't do this. It also does provide us some parameters about what we can do, which again, that goes back to that education piece, providing teachers and other staff members more information and confidence about, okay, this is where we know that these conversations can go, because again, diversity, equity, inclusion, the center of what we're doing, we want to continue to do as we go forward this year with school instruction.
Yeah, so the next two slides actually talk about the 10 items that are, they call their defined concepts that should not be part of racist and sexism training, professional development, curriculum instruction. And I'll just read them quickly to you. One, race or sex is inherently superior to another race or sex. That the United States and the state of Iowa fundamentally are systematically, systemically racist or sexist. That an individual solely based on their race or sex is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. That the individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatments later partly because of their race or sex. That members of one race or sex cannot and should not attempt to treat others without respect to race or sex. That an individual's moral character is necessarily determined by their individual's race or sex. Seven, that an individual by virtue of their race or sex bears responsibility for actions committed in the past by other members of that same sex or race. That individuals should feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or any form of other psychological distress on the account of that individual's race or sex. And meritocracy or traits such as hard work ethic are racist or sexist, were created by a particular race to oppress other race. And the last one is kind of just the catch-all one, that any other form of race or sex scapegoating or any other form of race or sex stereotyping. This one, like Chase said, navigates back to things that we can do. I think we had a slide in there that more explicitly talked about some of those, but I think that's like, it's not there anymore. That we can continue to provide our DEI training, like Chase shared already. And that it's to be construed consistent with the First Amendment and does not inhibit or violate First Amendment rights of students or staff. As it relates to curriculum and class discussion, staff should provide a learning environment where students can feel comfortable sharing their viewpoints and opinions as part of their learning and development. And then when teachers ask students to share their viewpoints and opinions, they should not be graded on what views or opinions the students express, but may be graded on how clearly they articulate their thoughts. And then, trainings and curriculum discussion, what can it include? Specifically, specified concepts could be included in the larger course of academic instruction. You can see those listed there, including the discussion of the causes and consequences of racism, sexism, and oppression. So, it's not saying that we can't teach it, but that we have to allow for varying viewpoints back to that First Amendment discussion that we were having. The House file does not apply to an event or presenter if it's not mandatory. So, co-curricular events or presenters that are voluntary may address those specific 10 defined concepts that I just read through. And training may still consist on an exploration of our past and current state of racism, sexism, and inequality. Meaningful dialogue on the topics often have affected though of making people feel uncomfortable. Such discomfort is not prohibited. Training should create an environmental respect where diversity of views and beliefs can be safely shared to encourage everything thoughtfully considered, alternate views. And all of this, the video that we had the staff watch, intended to use the term, term market, encourage a marketplace of ideas.
So, when we look at, that's a lot of information. So, we're trying to like, you know, go through with staff and then kind of make it, put it in some bullets of what does it mean? It's back to that overall point that we can't teach, advocate, encourage, promote, or act upon specific stereotyping or scapegoating. But again, we're reading that we can continue our diversity, equity, and inclusion training for students and staff. This, this phrase, whether it's a defined concept, so throughout the terminology, why we, why we bulleted, comes up a lot about, Matt was saying earlier about kind of the meaning or the reason behind some of the legislation. And they keep coming back to this idea that you can't use any form of race or sex scapegoating or stereotyping in any of the discussions of racism or sexism. Talking about the history and trying to tie current attributes to things that, that happened in the past, or some of the things that come up over and over. And then here we go, back to kind of what we talked about earlier, what JP was talking about. The referral to the BOE, going back to that, how are we gonna enforce this? What's accountability going to be not on the district, but on the individuals as well? Reiterating the point that Joe may have ever about making sure that we're educating our, our staff on these House files. And that we can use curriculum on the teachers, topics of sexism, slavery, racial oppression, racial segregation or racial discrimination. There was some thought that we had to pull those out of our curriculum, and that's, and that's not true. And that is reiterated in this. So, again, a lot of information packed in one House file, but we'll, we'll pause there for, and we'll have more discussion. End of the pause there for some questions before we go on to the political allegiance.
I'm imagining we just have to wait and see, who gets to define scapegoating? Who gets to say what that means? Because if I read this, I will get the impression that people who wrote this law have never attended a diversity training. That they're maybe hearing things about it, but really good diversity training does boil these things, right? It doesn't scapegoat, and it helps people come to a place that is, and large directly to some of the stuff you've been doing about creating an answer in mutual respect.
This came from a place where, so, there was, there was some diversity training that took place when the bill first was introduced back with the last, the COVID-19 place. And it was, ironically, a white company. And they did tell them, it was a federal training, it was mandatory for that particular institution. They did tell the employees that it was their, like, the white employees, that exactly what it was saying, it's your fault. You know, you should feel this way, made them repeat some things. It was bad.
Okay.
It was bad.
Okay.
This came out of that.
Got it.
The problem with that is that though that the rumblings around it made a blanket kind of like assumption that all the DEI trainings were similar. And so, we're weeping the repercussions of that.
Yeah, because a lot, some of this, I don't, we're not worried. I mean, I, I understand why people are worried. I get it, because it's fuzzy and it's scary when you talk about BOE and termination and all that. But my experience and from what I've heard is, we're doing just fine with this. Like, our training, you know, our diversity training meets this, and I would frankly welcome these folks into our classrooms and into our trainings so they can experience it and maybe have some of these conversations, I mean.
And I know we're spending time tonight going through like actually what the policy is. And after, I would hope that after, you know, the school has been in session for a while, we could get some of our educators or staff at a similar discussion so they can share, okay, this is what we were told, and this is how it's impacting, or how I'm able to still do what I'm required to do to teach. Because I, I, I know, you know, you hear and see people saying, oh, you can't teach about slavery anymore. And I'm like, I don't think that's what they say.
Yeah.
But that's the interpretation that's out there.
Right.
So, I, can I give a scenario that is never gonna happen? You call me in and to do professional development required for our teachers, because I'm really good at it. And white teacher Brady comes in, and I, I can't say, you're white, so you're racist. I mean, that was pretty clear. Can I say, because you're a white man, you have biases that affect how you look at stuff, right? Can you say that kind of stuff?
Can you say you have or you might have?
So, like, but we've never said anything like that. What we've said is, we all have implicit bias, everyone. We've taken a cultural humility approach to talking about race. Our district has probably been the most like kid gloves about this whole situation. We've probably been the least anti-racism about it, and it's like, period. Like, cultural humility is like, you know, you're, you might not understand everything, you might not always get right, but we're not gonna act like one piece of diversity is better than, than the other. You know, we're gonna come with humility about it. We're gonna take a restorative attitude toward it, and we might get some things wrong, you know? But, but we're gonna try, we're, we're just gonna try, we're gonna try to be better about it. That's the approach we take. So, like, we would never say, you know, like, because of your whiteness, you're inherently going to think this way. What we would say is, me too! You know what I'm saying? Like, we're all gonna have these biases, we're gonna have these stereotypes about one another. Can we, uh, work on that? Can we reverse the story about that? Can we switch that judgment? Can we strive to be better? That's what, that's what the trainings are about, is that no one is exempt from being like, you know, like, from making a misstep or potentially causing harm, because we're human. And the minute you think that you're perfect and that you can't, you, you know, like, that's just not the world we live in. It's just about like, we're gonna make these judgments about one another, but like, how long are you gonna hold on to it? Or can you fix it if you caused harm? Can you try to like go to the person and make it right? Because we're in this together. That's what we've been like teaching and preaching, real talk. So, like, it's, it's never been about like, you should feel, like, you should feel bad because, you know, this and that. The amount of people teaching critical race theory in our district is probably zero. I've not, I'm like, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've not met anybody teaching critical race theory in our particular district. If they, if they were, they probably were in a specific class here towards that, at the upper level. Do you get what I'm saying? Like, with people who opted into that particular curriculum. So, the fear around people teaching that, like, that's, it's just, it's not a reason for it. You know, so I, you know, it's just not, and I, and I get it, because people don't know, but like, these kids are all white kids. I normally wanna deliberately make white kids feel bad for being white. But it's just not, like, it's just not a thing, it's not a real thing.
So, we have also, you know, like Laura, right, that, that are doing this for us? But it seems to me if whoever came up with this law participated in maybe some other diversity training, maybe here, then we wouldn't have this law.
You're absolutely right, though, and there are other districts that don't have some of the good resources we have internally like we do. And so, SAI, ISEA, and ISB, I, it's the alphabet soup of all our, got together and put together a collaborative guidance document, Sean, and one of the examples they gave is that exact point. And it relates to concept number three, and what they basically say is intent matters. This does not prohibit the teaching of concepts such as implicit bias or unconscious bias. It prohibits teaching and attributes unconsciously or implicit biases caused due to an individual's race or sex. So, like, that exact example you gave, there are districts that, that don't even, you know, are struggling with that type of concept because they don't, they, they're not where we are. And so, some of our partners at the state have put documents together to help provide guidance to others so they have answers to questions like that. Because there, there's that one and other ones like that that are out there that districts are trying, are trying to wrestle.
And we have some people who are far advanced, they're ready for stuff like critical race theory, like some, some teachers. And I think they should be able to access that on a voluntary basis, like, if that's where they wanna go for their learning. I'm not saying that's what we should teach our, our students as a curriculum, especially at like the smaller levels. It's just not appropriate for that, do you get what I'm saying? Like, if there's a place and space for it, I think it's at, in college, personally, you know what I'm saying? But, you know, that's just not, you can process it in different ways. It's, it's very specific. And I say, if you don't know what it is, I would say, take a clap, like, learn to find out what it is. It's really, really deep.
Yeah.
It's good.
A lot of the people complain about it, I don't think understand what it is, right? And first of all, and, and I think what you hear Laura talk about is the approach we really wanna try to take, and that's where I think we build confidence with our staff too. Like, when I started at the beginning about wanting to talk to each other and work with each other, we wanna give them confidence about what they can do, and that's what you heard Laura talk about, right? What are a lot of the things we can do? What are we still committed to? When we say we can still be committed to our goals and do these things, we can, right? And we can still, we've never done diversity training like this, just like she talked about. This isn't the way you would design it if you really wanted to move people and change and move beliefs and structures and systems. So, focusing on what we can do, I think is important because there is gonna be the scripted examples we could think through, the really bad ones that, you know, we can maybe boil down and have a, you know, how do we get a cut or dry answer? The harder ones are gonna be like, you know, have been asked us at the podium about what happens when the conversation comes up. Well, if there's a question, you can still answer the question, right? I mean, it's a, it's a child in front of you, asking the question about what this is or what this means. You can ask the question. It's really about what's in our curriculum, what do we do for training, what do we expose people to? And then how do we respond, you know, if, if somebody does bring a concern around it and trying to help shape that understanding? So, other questions you guys have? Kind of went off a little tangent there, but on that one before, I think Ruthina's thought, sorry Charlie, I don't get that. I think your thought about making sure we, we come back with some pugs too, about, okay, how's this really going? You know, I think it's important because we're also hearing some things, sorry? You made a joke and it went right over my head, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
But yes, Matt.
Yeah, I think just having some examples, because we don't want people to shy away from some of the good things they're doing. And if that starts to happen, that's, we're not hitting the mark, right? So, we need to, we need to pay attention to that part of it, but Charlie, you were gonna have?
Actually, I think Ruthina's coaching idea here is probably what I really want to do, is so that teachers and their staff members have a clear idea of what, of how this does or does not affect what they wanna do in their classroom. And, you know, to me, that's more than a professional development, maybe a little bit different than a professional development training.
Yeah.
Do, do our teachers have a point person other than you, Laura, that's your only one person? But like, that, that if they're saying, hey, I'm kinda getting close in this, and I just wanna bounce it off somebody to make sure I don't step in it, like, are we giving them that type of resource? Where they can go and access help if they want it?
Yeah, I mean, I would go to their traditional teaming structures, right? So, elementaries, you're gonna have PLCs teams, you're gonna have your leadership teams.
IDS.
Secondaries, your IDS, yes, thank you. Secondary, you're gonna have your curriculum coordinators, again, IDS. You're gonna have your building administrators, that's what we want our building administrators to be able to do, and they are the ones that can connect, you know, with Laura or us at the district level for those things. So, yes, that's where we want people asking those questions if they're unsure or nervous. And we know that slows you down potentially, but at the same time, if it's gonna have you in a better sense of safe space and confidence, we want you to reach out to those, but that's a good question. And the other plug I give is, if you remember from the Esther Dollars, we're also trying to build out the capacity of our equity department, so there's gonna be other people visiting buildings for other regard around restorative justice and our equity ambassadors that we're going to work with. So, we're gonna have more visibility, I think, around the area of equity too, that'll help that nature of the conversation, and people well-positioned to answer those questions.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was thinking earlier when you were talking about, you know, what happens when somebody gets upset about something, you know, when they get referred or whatnot. I do think that, you know, being able to do, you know, some restorative practices, and when something does go wrong, because it will, somebody will say something wrong. Being able to work in the moment to correct that before somebody gets upset enough that they gotta go to the BOE, right? It's a huge, you know, tool that we can use.
I think too, that's, you know, that's the power of collaborating with your teams in advance, communicating with Laura, her team, your building administrators. Every example we used with the BOE, as we spoke through that earlier tonight, was a singular person. You know, no one said, you know, a department full of people got called to their BOE, and I think what the challenge is. So, that, that's when you see that, and I think it's harder for us as a district and harder for the person if they're out there completely alone in things they find formal. I think the challenge is that there are those moments in a classroom that you never are going to. going to anticipate that can be really powerful and beautiful, and knowing how to respond better in a culturally responsive way, it is challenging. Laura's training is amazing, yet it's still putting it into action in the classroom, of course, it's tough. Or can be tough, because this changes every single year, so it's varied by teaching. But I think, you know, in terms of your instructional strategies and critical materials, you know, forethought and collaboration and, you know, clear communication can, can help along with the training. You know, that's where, you know, some of those things, and I think, you know, I think this is a really important conversation, and I, I do know the staff and the teachers will, you know, appreciate the continued conversation by the district, like Matt talked about, because there is this, just like if we're all wrestling through, imagine a teacher, that now you're going like, look, okay, now I'm really not sure, you know, I'm, you know, I'm gonna talk to, like tomorrow, I'm talking to Senator Connor John Lewis. Well, it's hard not to talk about the systems that were in place that were discriminatory, that John Lewis and Senator Connor, they're in their lifetime. So how do you, how do you do that? So those are not experienced teachers. So I think that those continued conversations are, because I think anxiety for folks is as high on formal things and then also just those moments that you know are gonna happen in your room, you'll, you're not, you haven't scripted, and you wanna know how to respond well. So I really appreciate what, you know, what Laura said and what we're saying, you know, the diversity within diversity, right? And as we talk about all the time, so, but, but I think that, too, it seems just really, you have to get, you know, just helping people understand who their resources are, just collaborating and connecting to your standards and making very good materials and your instructional practices and knowing that classrooms are beautiful and nice.
We're committed to teaching the truth. I think we have to.
Yeah.
Like, we're, that's, we're educators. So we, how we do that, we just have to be really strategic about how we do it, understanding that there's a sensitivity out there, that's really real, and that, right? There's the people who don't understand and have a, a real fear around it, that's a culture too, and we have to be careful with that culture as well, right?
Yeah.
Just thinking about that.
And uplifting people, I mean, this is, if, when you look at all of the scapegoating, all that, there's so many amazing stories in our history when we start to be more inclusive and responsive culturally that are uplifting stories, they're amazing stories that just aren't always told and attempted and told. That's, that, that is not gonna catch, that, that level of integrity is, that we have like an asset, you know, under the model, you know.
So our last item night is actually one of the new changes that we've already put to the fact, and maybe we can talk about that.
Yeah, so this calendar, House File 847, but each school must now administer the Pledge of Allegiance in grades one through twelve. Each school does, each classroom must display the United States flag during its participation. A student must not be compelled against their objections or their parents' objections to recite it. If a family prefers that they not recite it or not stand, they don't have to. Staff members are also not required. And you probably saw the communication that we sent out over the weekend in regards to that notifying our, our families as well.
How are you gonna do the pledge? Is there gonna be reciting each classroom?
That's a good question.
Over, over the PA system?
Yeah, so we, we've asked the buildings to use the intercom or use the PA system and have one person do it same time.
Once for the building?
Yeah, once, same time a day with PA.
So a teacher wrote that Westside posted something on his Facebook the other day that I probably didn't write, and he actually wrote a pledge that he posted on Facebook. It's two, one, four, five, six, ten, eleven, twelve. And I got to thinking, well, and if teachers are gonna do this, I'm not sure that you do, but one of the ways to talk about pledges is to have students write pledges and then talk about them, so that this, you know, the case is that they agreed that the Pledge of Allegiance, the National Pledge of Allegiance, and then the teacher could ask the student, students, if you want to, tell us what's your pledge and what it sounds like, and then talk about that. To me, that, that's a much better use of the National Pledge of Allegiance that's simpler than it is. So I think it'll be much better.
Like, that's a great point, Brady, kinda, or Charlie, it goes to the point Brady, I think, was making, like, there's so many, if you're strategic, that Lynn and Laura put on it with this, there's so many opportunities, right, for great conversations, so for great teaching moments with students. You know, unfortunately, some of these came from a, a place we wish they wouldn't have, but there are, you know, great examples like that, so thanks for sharing that one of an educator that's kinda working through this challenge in a, in a different way. Do they, do they have parameters on the flag? Does that be a certain size, is it a picture? We took care of the flags this summer. Some Chase got news, make sure we had flags for every classroom, because we thought about just displaying them, but then we're like, at some point, it won't get displayed, and then we'll be in trouble for not displaying it, so we have flags in every room. Yeah. But they're physical, I mean, they're.
They're, yeah.
They're, they're in this class, they're.
Oh, physical, okay. Yeah, they're the physical flags, yeah. Yeah. They're all there. Yeah.
Standard size.
How much should it cost?
I bought a flag code.
How much should it cost?
I meant standard size of each one.
How much should it cost by farts where we live in this, in this.
So, I mean, I didn't mean to, I was just, that was our last slide, did a little bit of the discussion, I'm happy to pull it back up, but, um, what was the price tag on the flag? I don't think it did that, I don't, I don't remember what it was.
I'm just curious.
Thousands, you know.
Yeah. We thought we had more than we did. I'll tell you that.
Did we use Esther Dollars for it? Was that a sign? We didn't really think it was like we had it. I see that we put some of these things up today.
No, we didn't use Esther Dollars. Maybe we could, you know, just as another education, we'll remind people of the flag codes and all their like American flag t-shirts, probably, you know, buy by the United States flag code or their little pink cups.
Aren't we supposed to teach them financial literacy? I'm sorry.
Their hats.
Does it, does it eat into our instructional time or does it help towards our instructional time? I mean, we laugh, but I remember when we had to make up all that time and we just cut five minutes, or we added five minutes on the day, we got like eight days by the, I mean, it adds up.
They, they carved it out of our instructional time. It has to happen in the bounds of the school day.
So we know this is an ongoing conversation, Ruthina's idea about making people at the table, but then JP about who's defining things. I mentioned that guidance document we've gotten from a couple of organizations beyond that, and honestly, a lot of the guidance we've gotten is different people reading us the law or, or, you know, the DEE, like, reading the different sections. And so there are a lot of unanswered questions out there, and there, I think there is a lot that has to still be worked out in terms of the interpretation and how it's implemented. And so we continue to ask questions. We want to invite questions from our building administrators, from our teachers to provide them that confidence and that reassurance of, that they're doing the right thing and that we're here to support them in that. And so this probably won't be the last conversation because we want to educate, as Joe said, I think that that's a very important point, that we wanna make sure that they feel comfortable in the classroom, that they have the information, that they need to be their best for our kids.
Well, I really feel a lot better after this, just with the clarification, and I really feel better about the work you guys are doing to kinda get the staff ready and it, and, and with continued kinda monitoring. I'm in a better place than I was before I came in tonight, my anxiety.
And I appreciate Laura, your comments, too. That has to be better and just what our approach is in the district, and that gave me a lot of, uh, co- confidence and assurance and, yeah, that we're doing the right thing and we don't have to be afraid of these laws because we're already doing the right thing.
And think about that, our whole staff gets to hear Laura's voice on those things, right? That is so cool. That is so cool. She has such a gift in how she delivers those messages. I mean, it is really special, so.
Yeah, Laura's fantastic, she's awesome, she's great. But I also heard comments, you know, from the last, Black Voices Project meeting, students, from teachers, you know, and they're, they're just, they're very much, you know, I feel better, but what I want is for the teachers to go.
Yeah, exactly.
So I mentioned, you know, when we talked about this at the last meeting, you know, and we were talking about it in terms of policy, right? We were enacting these policies and, you know, our policy structure has like little references or guidelines for our district. And I, I know that the concern was to be very careful what we're putting in policy, but I wonder, can we just have a guideline that is even, I don't know, directs you to where a repository of training materials would be or something like, I know we have it, there's gotta be stuff somewhere. Maybe it's like if there's a birdie clarke cage for staff or something could be found in this area and that's put together with a policy that's very limited in what policy is there. Am I making any sense?
You are. Yeah, I'm thinking about where we, you know, we, when we did some of that policy series update, we anchored some equity language into some of the goal statements for the district. I wonder if there's a place from almost, maybe a couple of different places, one to anchor something there about where they could go for, you know, support or resources or just even in the employee section of the, of the policies about, you know, employees with questions around these looking for support can access these resources or should access these folks on the team to do that. And so that would be a good reminder, you know, so that people, if they're, wrote it in there, or if we say, hey, these are the things we're providing, that it's really anchored back to policy in that way. So Kim and I can take a look at that and see what we could come up with to do, do some anchor points about, here's where you find the resources or training or development needed to support that.
Yeah, I understand the concern about, you know, writing something in a policy that's in direct, you know, conflict with the, with the rest of the policy, but I, I think anything we could do to provide the support, I think, when you, if you just have, you know, the dictated policy, right, that's coming from the state, even with, we put our words to it as a standalone thing, it's scary, right? That's what we've been talking about, so if we put something else with it, sure.
I think you need to be careful about how you word that, though, because you actually could be handing somebody who has a complaint tool, saying, did you, did you follow this policy? Did you go to this, 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 and this? And if the teacher says no, they throw that back at you. So I'm not saying don't do it, but I think you need to be careful about how that's expressed as a resource that's available, not something that somebody has to do or should do, but just, it's a resource that's out there if somebody thinks they need clarification. You need, you need to be careful about the wording.
I was wondering that, if we could lump it into just the required trainings that our staff do each year and just make reference to that and.
Required trainings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, Steph, there's just an emotional, I think we have an emotional need right now just to hear that the board works.
Thanks.
Yeah, there's not a, there's not, I mean, policy stuff, I think, will be good. I just think people wanna know, like, I'm committed to doing this work and I'm not always gonna get it right. And so when I don't get it right, and I've worked on it, and we sort of, you know, fell off key, you know, is the board gonna be with me?
Yeah.
That's, that's what people, I think, that's a part of it. Here's other things, but I think that that's a really important part.
Because like, if, if, if someone, let's say, like, gets five hundred signatures or whatever, and then they're like, I don't like that curriculum, is that teacher then stopping? You know, like, and then, I think that's still, like, you know, I think teachers are still like, am I gonna be putting forth all this effort and then it going down the wayside if someone makes a complaint? You know, that's still in the air, it's what I think you're.
We'll have some proof in a moment.
So I just think, if you're thinking like something the board, my, you know, just my opinion, you know, if something the board could do that would be meaningful, and those things, but then also like the, just that statement of like, yeah, we're, we don't know, you know, we've worked on this all night, we have, we share concerns, we're trying to figure it out, we're working with legal counsel, we just want you to know how much we appreciate you and that we're with you.
Well, we can probably get something by the next meeting.
Exactly, I mean, it'd be a short tweet.
Yeah, just a nice statement that would support our staff.
We got our problems, just to, yep.
So I wanted to just keep on that because what I heard Matt very long ago said at the beginning of the meeting is that one of the things that's up in the air is do we immediately halt the curriculum or do we allow it to continue? And it's a may, and that's something that the admin team is gonna work through and present. I just wanted to voice that my perspective is that we're not going to do the business of holding curriculum, waiting for these things to get sorted out. I trust, I trust our teachers and I trust them, and I'm not saying the policies we're never gonna halt, I think that you guys, but, but I, I like the air on the side of not holding curriculum because we have the best teachers in the state. And so we should let them teach and let them know that so that they, they don't, they have some questions, not some, something for answering. I also wanted to talk about the training just real quick, and if we can keep our eyes out for more training or more developed training as it, as it comes along, because I also heard a comment that some of the training is just reading the law. I may have gotten some feedback from a teacher, I live with him, about the, about the training from others. And so I, what I don't want is for teachers to listen to this meeting and say, well, they just told the board that they trained up the teachers and everything's hunky-dory and we, because I wanna say, I know that the training is tough, and it's tough because it's new and it's hard to answer questions, but if we can keep our eyes out for more and more detailed training as time progresses and we learn more about this law and how it works and say, you know, as training becomes available, we're gonna push out better and more training.
Yeah, definitely, and I wouldn't say it's hunky-dory at all, right? I mean, I think that's the thing.